Okay, welcome to tonight's Vermillion Local School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. Today is Monday, December 13th, 2021. Justin, follow rule, please.
Mrs. Steph.
Here.
Mr. Johnston, here. Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Haberman, here. Mrs. Ennis.
Here.
All members present?
Please stand for the Fled Allegiance, followed by the moment of silence. Fled Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Chris Haberman is going to do a student liaison report.
Okay, thank you. It's been awhile since we've had one of these. So we had a lot of great success in some of our fall programs, some of our fall sports programs this year. So we invited some of the teams and coaches to come in and just say a few words and recognize some of their players. So I know we've got tennis and volleyball here, right? I'm not sure if there's anyone else, but can you guys want to come up, please? Cross Country, too, yeah?
Yeah.
Alright. How about we go right over here? Sean, where are you? This good right here?
Oh, yeah.
So maybe start down to the end, but tennis? Terry, you want to start with tennis?
Sure. Do you need a mic or sort of holler?
It's up to you.
Alright, so first of all, as board, thanks for having us here today. It's a pleasure to honor these students for a great fall season. I, of course, had Sophia Flemster on our girls' tennis team this year. As you can see, she double dipped and actually did volleyball and tennis, but let's have volleyball coach just talk about her there. Just a few highlights of her season this year. She started off playing doubles in a tournament and ended up finishing second at the Lakewood Doubles Tournament, the highest finish we've had in that tournament in quite some time. Her doubles partner, Alyssa Sheath, was very happy to have you as a partner. Got her a plaque in that tournament, so. But as the season progressed, she had many accomplishments. She finished first team all-conference in the SBC Lake Division, which is a very difficult division. She was actually seeded fifth going into the tournament, so she pulled a couple upsets during the tournament to get that first team all-conference, which was fantastic. Which led into our sectional tournament where she was the number one seed at the Fort Clinton Sectional. She eventually went 5-0 at the sectional, won the tournament, and obviously qualified for districts, which is the first time that that's happened, and I'm only guessing here, for at least 10 years. I looked through the history of the girls' tennis program over the last 10 years, and she's our first district qualifier in quite a while, so it's been an amazing season for her. She also broke a school record. She is the current record holder for most wins in the season with 20 wins at first singles for our tennis program. So her name will be in the record books up front there by the auditorium, which is fantastic. She's also been nominated to the Morning Journal All-Star Team. We are still waiting on whether she's first team or second team. That should be coming out pretty soon, but the fact that she is known and recognized in Erie County as well as Lorraine County is fantastic for her. Sophia's been a great role model and leader for our team. Obviously, our tennis program is building kind of from the ground up at this point, so to have her as a role model and kind of lay the foundation for where our program can go going forward, we're very proud of her, and it's been an honor to have her as part of our tennis program, not only this year with the girls' program, but she's played with the boys' team since her freshman year. So she's a four-year letter winner. Great season, and very proud to have her on the program this year, so congratulations.
Hello, I represent for Cross Country. I am never as well-prepared as Coach Anders and all the accolades, but I'll speak as Coach Ann Mom of Joseph. He did profoundly well this season and stepped into a natural leadership role for our team, which is a challenge as a freshman, certainly, coming into the program. But he proved himself every week and represented the Sailors well every Saturday. Made it to districts, of course, and I don't, again, never really well-prepared. All of the accolades.
Sixteenth in districts, poorest person.
Yeah, dad remembers. I'm just happy. I just do this. But we are very proud of his accomplishments, and Joseph.
We are here on behalf of volleyball team. Coach Popman and Coach Nader couldn't make it tonight. We have Jenna and Sophia here, two of our five seniors on our record-breaking year. We ended the year 26-1. We made it to the Elite Eight, farthest we've ever gone. We broke numerous records. Jenna, would you like to share the records that you broke?
Yeah. I know I have nine total. That's what I got. A lot of blocking records.
Jenna holds all the blocking records.
Obviously, starting with the undefeated season up till the end, that was like one of their first goals. They were able to accomplish that, and we'd never been beyond the district tournament until this year, so finishing in the Elite Eight was quite an accomplishment.
Yes, and the community sport was amazing, so we appreciate all of the support from the community and the schools.
And some All Ohio recognition, too, right?
Yes, so all had, including Jenna, second-team Ohio, Grace Starkovic. I'm drawing a blank.
Coach of the Year?
Oh, yeah, Carol Colvin, Coach of the Year. And Hallie and Mel, honorable mention, All Ohio. And many county awards, district awards.
Conference Awards.
Conference Awards. Jenna, Conference Player of the Year, very kind Player of the Year, District Player of the Year. There you go. Good job, too, Sophia.
Thanks, everybody, for coming in tonight. For all of you guys, your accomplishments are outstanding. It's not an easy thing to do, to balance school with activities, and especially when you excel at them, so great job. And I just got to say, I remember on Parents' Night at the volleyball game, when Mr. German read all the things that you're involved in, Sophia. I was like, holy mackerel, I don't even understand how you manage it, but that's incredible. Great job.
We're very proud of all of you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate your coming in.
Okay, we're going to move on to the Super Tennis Report. Mr. Pundit.
Okay, the first item on my report tonight are robotics initiatives and some student presentations, so I'd like to talk a little bit about just the robotics aspect of this. First, we talked a little bit about it in previous board meetings. Robotics is an up-and-coming field and really an established field, and we believe that it's essential for our students to become involved in competitions. And we have some teachers here in our district that are very involved with the students with these projects and with the ability for them to participate in the events that robotics offers. So we will be giving you a little bit more information about those as we go on, but I think the robotics haven't been quite controversial, so to speak, as the esports, so I'll speak a little bit more about the esports. I know that we have discussed the, if this is a possible option for an activity for our district, and we've looked at whether or not we wanted to incorporate this into the district and have this as a possibility. And I could say that Jenna's told me that there's about 40 students that are interested in this, which is quite a number. And across the state, there's a lot of schools, districts that already have this as an activity. And just like with anything else, even with the sport, there's pros and cons. And I know that the district might be concerned that there might be some issues with the students having too much screen time, that they're already on their screens for work that they do here, but we believe that the coaches that we would hire for the supplementals would be watching the students and making sure that they're working and having a balance as they do this. So I'm going to stop speaking and let the students come up at this point. I put a sheet out in front of the board to know about why bring esports to the high school, and that articulates a lot of the reasons why we believe that this needs to happen. I think that it tells you the number of students that are interested in playing, the fact that we've got a grant that's already been given to the district and it's ready to go to defer some of the expenses. Are on this fact sheet, but we're going to let the students just come up and talk and tell their point of view of why they think that we need to have esports for them.
Alright. Good afternoon. I'm Brendan. I'm a senior here at Vermillion. I have, with me, Jacob Thomas and Lou Pritt. And we are here to discuss why Vermillion High School will benefit from the addition of an esports team. So, to start, what is esports? So esports or electronic sports are competitive electronic games of strategy and discipline that can be played individually or as a team. The versatility of gameplay and game genre makes esports one of the most versatile competitions appealing to many contestants and non-contestants in the world, while also making one the most popular and well-pleaded. So if esports for Vermillion High School is approved, we will be joining Esports Ohio. Esports Ohio is a free-to-join educational nonprofit esports organization and league created by teachers for students. Their vision is to create a world where electronic sports are embraced as a positive educational and development change agent for all students. They are similar and follow the same rules as our OHSAA, that is followed by all of our other varsity sports here at Vermillion. So esports has, Esports Ohio has a similar mission, which is to empower students by providing educational institutions with knowledge, direction, support, and resources to implement, maintain, educate, and compete in electronic sports. They're striving to give you and your students the best possible accommodations for educational value, competition, involvement, and recruitment. One of the biggest problems I've heard was how will we play, who will we play, is it all online? So with Esports Ohio, scrimmages, games, regionals, and state championships will be played only against other high schools that are a part of the Esports Ohio group. All VHS esports activities will be supervised by our mentors and coaches. Practices will not, will be against fellow students or against what we call bots or artificial AI. Computers, both of these games have computers that you can go against to practice on. And the biggest idea is that students will not go against random players online. We'll be struggling to only students throughout competitions and practice. With the schedule breakdown, which is hard to see, which is the spirit week on there, but it's broken down by February being the deadline for registration, seven weeks of gameplay, and each week for makeup and wildcard and conference tournaments, and then two days for regionals and two days for state finals at University of Akron, Mexico. Each week, during those seven weeks, each day has its own separate game that will be played. Esports Ohio will have set rules, who we're playing, and how we play is, we do it all online for at least the first couple weeks of games will be all online. So we'll be playing here at Vermillion against, for example, Norwalk Truckers with their esports team. Moving on, I'm going to have Jacob Thomas take over.
Alright, so as a lot of you are probably wondering, how would this benefit our student body? So we're going to look at what the research says. So if you want to look, you can't really read it too well on there, but in parentheses are the scientists that conducted research in each of these fields. So as research is going on, scientists have found improved visual acuity and attention from students participating in esports, which pretty much just means they can pick up easier with their eyes. And they foster scientific reasoning better, so they just quickly understand things, accelerated language learning. And esports, of course, is commonly associated with technology fluency, so it teaches children and students how to better use the technology that they're given. It improves digital and print literacy, increased problem-solving skills, and it's associated with higher math achievement. I would say the increased problem-solving skills and the math is a lot to do with a lot of team bonding and a lot of having to come together and say, take damaged numbers or something and add those up. That's a lot of math and a lot of problem solving that students have to come together to solve. So what are the statistics of esports in high schools? These upcoming events are from the Extreme E-Campus News Hole Wide, which was conducted back in May of this year. They conducted a survey by asking high school students around the world about their involvement and clients with esports and just high school administrators. So if you want to look at the board, 56% of high schools have seen academic improvements after implementing esports. 41% found increased student participation and recruitment, and 20% of the top esports athletes from these high schools have attracted scholarships to national colleges. Also, 80% of the esports students and athletes are first-time participants in an extracurricular activity for their school. More participation gives non-traditional student athletes more opportunities to experience the leadership and teamwork that would go into a normal sport that, you know, those groups of people probably wouldn't have put themselves in if not for the common, you know, enjoyment of something that they really enjoy or something that they can be more comfortable in. It was also found that there's an average 1.7 average GPA increase among students that participated in esports. And I'd like to make a point that esports will function like standard sports do, so a student can't be failing and be participating in esports. It'll work just like the rest of our sports here, and students will still have to meet those requirements to be able to participate in the first place. And as a last note, there's a 10% increase in school attendance as esports team would give students who are participating, of course, another reason to come to school to do something that they enjoy. So now I'm going to go through some of the common benefits for just any student or team that would participate. It gives students an opportunity for teamwork and cooperative learning that a lot of students wouldn't have taken a chance in before, say, like football. A lot of students that, you know, participate in football, they wouldn't say they're fortees in video games, but a lot of people who would say they're forte or focus is in video games wouldn't say football is necessarily their thing. So that would give that region of students an opportunity to learn about teamwork and be in a team environment that they might not have gotten the chance to be in before. Students will analyze game statistics and strategies. In doing so, they gain real-world experience to help solve their problems when they get into the job field and graduate. And it also just improves any sort of cognitive, cognitive ability in those sort of fields. And I've already mentioned this, but student athletes will gain a sort of sense of community that I would say that sort of body of students hasn't gotten to be in before, as video games haven't necessarily been a prime focus of any club or any activity or any extracurricular before. So this will give those students that want to do that the opportunity to sort of experience what others have felt in other sports.
So, and the last thing about sense of community is that these student athletes that are, that 80% of first-time student athletes going out for a sport will have access to positive adult mentors. So here at Vermillion, our esports team would be supervised and coached by Ms. Beckless and Mr. Harris. These extraordinary teachers are very helpful. They accept everyone for help. And now these students will have new mentors, new relationships to be born with these mentors that traditional athletes already have with their coaches. Now I'm going to pass on to Lou.
Their students' future with esports. And moving on beyond high school esports, since esports will be classified as a varsity sport, it will open new doors for students to enter those jobs and positions. Their students' future with esports. Esports will provide students with exposure to more job opportunities. Esports will prepare for tomorrow's workforce, since these teams are our future. More experiences and opportunities are needed to keep them in the future. Esports will prepare students for jobs in the business of esports, like sports sales, sports marketing, corporate relations, coaching, broadcasting, and the other. Also, jobs beyond esports are exposed to students. There's a Venn diagram on the slide, and you can go into job opportunities such as organizers, with general managers, event organizers, and IT support. There's content creators such as software developers, shoutcasters, streamers, and journalists. Entrepreneurs, you can create art, you can develop business, you can do the marketing, you can be a web developer.
Even some of these jets that are branching off of playing games, like software development and web development nowadays, as future technology is becoming the norm, these jobs are now paying six figures for average salaries.
Scholarships and college opportunities. Colleges are now adapting esports into the university sports program, such as Ashland University with $4,000, Tiffle University with $3,000, University of Akron $1,000 to $5,000, and Kent State University $5,000 full cost tuition.
$500 to full cost.
And then, Ohio-area universities with esports programs. In Ohio, there are at least 17 universities with esports programs, and the numbers are growing. Numbers are growing, sorry. Nearby, there is Kent, University of Akron, Ashland University, OSU, Tiffle. Further beyond Ohio, there are at least 175 colleges in the United States that have esports. Most of these scholarships offer partial to even full tuition athletic scholarships. Nearby high schools, so I don't, oh, there. At the beginning of this presentation, Brendan explained that all the competitors and matches who played only against high school participated. High schools participated in esports Ohio, so here is the big question. If neighboring high schools are joining, why are they? As of now, there are over 150 high schools in Ohio that have joined esports Ohio. Even our next-door neighbor Marion L. Steele High School, also known as Anprist School, is getting involved in esports. Some teams in our own conference are joining, like Tiffle Columbia and Norwalk. Finally, other examples include Oberlin, Phoenix, Fremont High Schools, and UALD, just in.
So now, I'd like to explain the ratings of these games that these students will be playing. The second, if not first, biggest reason against esports would be what is in these games. Not all games are violent, and I'd like to help explain why these games are suitable for our teams at Vermillion High School. Let me help you understand how these games are rated. The ESRB rating system, also known as Entertainment Software Rating Board, can be compared to the MPA rating system or the Motion Picture Association Rating Board. The ESRB is globally accepted rating for all video games. All games must be rated to be on shelves for all to see and know what types of games they are playing, and same thing goes for movies. So all games nowadays are categorized by five types of ratings. E for everybody, for ages eight and up. E10 for everybody 10 and up. Teen is suitable for 13 and up. Mature is rated 17 and up, and adults only is rated 18 and plus. And rated areas over are compared to movie ratings. So E would be equal to G, E10, PG, teen, PG13, M rated R, and adults only would be no one under 17. So, and it's hard to see from there at the end, but Esports Ohio is only accepting the first three. Everyone, E10, and teen, for their games to be suitable for playing. Here are the games we'll be playing. We have Rocket League, Super Smash Bros. Ultimate, Fortnite Valorant, and Overwatch. Rocket League is rated E, Super Smash Bros. is rated E10, and the last three, Fortnite Valorant and Overwatch, are rated teen. So why are these three rated teen? Because they contain mild violence. But this is not new to our teens, new to our teens here at Vermillion High School. Teens today are already exposed to these materials. And also, keep in mind, there are high schools that are right next to us that are also approved for playing those as well. Anyways, let me explain how these are already exposed. All these materials are already exposed to our student body compared to the ratings of movies. Because if teen is equal to PG13, then we're already exposed to seeing the same material as families together, just in movie form. So can anybody here, parents in school board, raise your hands if you let your team watch any of these movies on the board? If not, have you let them see any Marvel movie? Some Disney movies, even like the recent Jungle Cruise, Pirates, or even Avatar. All these movies are rated PG13. They have the equivalent of being rated teen. I'm highly sure that you brought your families to a movie night to at least one of these films. And this is not a bad thing. Kids are growing into teens, teens are almost adults. They'll eventually, if not already, be exposed to these materials. For reassurance, there will be parent consent forms will be sent out for our teams participating in rated teen games. We are not forcing these teams to play. It is their choosing. Finally, most likely, these teams have already glossed over the violence. Esports is much more different than playing games at home. Esports is competitive. Violence is ignored. Instead of problem-solving strategies and teamwork, we'll tower over and push students who already play games to focus on these topics instead. This is a major positive for these students and teams that play games, as esports will push them into a positive mode for their playing of games. Now to my final point, esports invites all. Whoever you are, you can join. No boundaries will be placed on students willing to join esports. Discrimination is long gone with this. It doesn't matter what race you are, what sex you are, or how old you are, what your education is like, or where you come from. Everybody's brought together for a common purpose. Play video games with their friends and teammates. Kids could be in school or even virtual. With COVID there have been kids who developed into homeschooling and virtual learning to protect themselves. Esports will be open to them as well. Esports Ohio, the organization we will be using, allows for this. And they'll be able to play at home and still support our school. This chart on the right is a chart from Pew Research Center. It is a, they took a survey of 1,000 teens, whether or not they play video games or not, and what type of race, sex, age, and all that about them. The reason I'm showing this is because there are widely different gainers in the community, but esports will bring them all together. Now for the biggest point of whoever can join, even teams with disabilities. Our biggest boundary has been broken with esports. The idea of letting kids with mental or physical disabilities join a varsity sport. A door for a community to join, find new friends, and a level playing field has opened for these kids with disabilities. They can get special buttons that can plug into what we call Xbox's adaptive controller. Xbox, Microsoft Xbox, a leading game company, created an adaptive controller for these disabled kids. But this is just one of many types of controllers these disabled kids can use. So I'd like to play a video of Xbox's adaptive controller, hopefully it's loud enough.
At Xbox, we have a controller design that our fans love.
At Xbox, we have a controller design that our fans love. However, for gamers with limited mobility, or gamers who don't use both their hands, this controller design might not work best for them.
Door knobs are the worst thing ever, man. Putting on shoes, the cell phones that I use. These are the sorts of things that we don't think about until we have to, and I think about them every day. I have several faults on my entire right side. This side of the controller is fine. This side doesn't have. And game platforms have gotten more sophisticated. The controllers have gotten more sophisticated, and it's starting to get really frustrating.
We designed the Xbox Adaptive Controller through feedback from the accessibility community.
Xbox Adaptive Controller. Very easy, just hard to end, and I would change hardens, and it's other devices. Make it like for me, or like, and ask.
The Xbox Adaptive Controller, a game like Game with one hand and one foot, or one hand and their shoulder, or even one foot and their chin. Can I change it from here to there?
And ready, forward. Space Tom, here it is.
Craig Hospital is facilitating for patients with either type of spinal cord injury or traumatic brain injury, and it's placed further rehab.
Yes.
We're here every day, my helping new patients getting back in the gaming game.
Is that the theme of that?
Yeah. Our role as occupational therapists is to get people back to doing. When the Xbox Adaptive Controller came along, it acted like an Xbox controller. It just worked.
Uh-oh, over there.
On the standard Xbox controller, it's just hard to press the buttons because you can't really put pressure through my hands. But then with the adaptive controller, I think larger joysticks, larger buttons are easier to press and reach.
Cory is brother Zachary or twins. Before Cory's injuries, Zachary had teamed with him regularly, and that was something that they related to each other as siblings.
Do you love playing Xbox when you're at Craig Hospital?
Smack.
The Xbox Adaptive Controller and the co-op feature allowed them again to play games together. So there's a huge social component to it.
You got that. Yes, yes. They can play any game they want. I see the confidence just burst out of them.
At Xbox, we have a controller design that helps.
That is just one of many types of controllers that disabled kids can use. This one on the right is a company called Quadstick. They developed a game controller for quadriplegics, or kids, teens, adults that are paralyzed with all four of their limbs. Um, this controller allows the use of their mouse to still play games up to par with regular kids and students. As for your bottom lip can be a button, your breathing can become a button, and even your top lip can be used to move around your character. We have seen some, or some of you may have seen it, kids that are handicapped. Esports is a massive door that will be opened for them to join. Disabled kids now have the chance to play a varsity sport for the first time, maybe even the only time in their life. Esports gives everyone, including disabled kids, a level playing field to train and compete on. So let's give them this chance. With many positives of esports, Vermillion will benefit. In conclusion, esports Ohio has and will continue to provide a safe environment for teens to compete against each other in electronic sports. Esports will provide teens with future job experiences like problem-solving and teamwork. It also opens up scholarship opportunities to kids that have never even set foot on a field. High schools around us are joining in and benefiting from esports. With an eighty percent of first-time participants, Vermillion needs esports to better get student involvement with our school. Yes, there is minor violence in some of these games. But all these positives, and teens exposed to similar material, violence is disregarded when kids, when students play competitively, because they are forced on teamwork, communication, and problem-solving instead of just violence. Violence is the first, right now the only chance for teens with disabilities to join a level playing field at a varsity level for their school. Handicapped kids now have the chance to stand out and be better at something that kids are not good at sometimes. With this presentation, I hope you consider the approval of esports here at Vermillion. We're not doing this because we want to play video games at school. We're doing this to provide opportunities for kids that are not involved in athletics. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Do you have that presentation available that you could email to us?
Uh, yeah, what email would you like me to send?
You can send it to my email, and then I'll make sure that the board has it.
All right. I can also send our notes and stuff.
Perfect, perfect.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that was a very comprehensive presentation, and I know that the board was looking for additional information. Jen had come to a meeting before and did a presentation for the board, but, uh...
Their presentation blew the doors off mine. Um, there's Brendan D., Jacob Thomas, and Lou Fred. And you also have RJ Rivera, Blake Wilson, Spencer Trendall, and the Kid Brothers. You guys are participating. Okay, so I have one of the students here that have shown a lot of support, that have interest in esports team. And I just, I am so impressed Brendan and Jacob and Lou. They did that presentation. I was involved in that. And, um, and they took it upon themselves to do that, so I'm really proud of you guys. That was awesome.
So I know that the board was looking for more information, and when we get that PowerPoint, we'll forward it to the board. And I would like to have you all look at it, and I would really like to put it up for a recommendation for approval at the next board meeting. I know that we need to study it a little bit more. And I know that we were comparing it, for example, to swimming, which we had as a varsity sport last year, and the students needed to come in, do a presentation, and they had to come in several times and just ensure that we were comfortable with it. Once again, I know that, as the students mentioned, that there are some things in this that are not necessarily controversial, but there's pros and cons to anything, just like there would be in a sport. As you know, there's injuries that happen in sports, and there's other types of things that can be associated with sports that aren't necessarily all good all the time. So it's just like this, and we're confident that our coaches that would be supervising these students would do a great job of this, and, uh, so I'll get you the information. And if there's anything you need additional between now and the next board meeting, if you'd let me know, I'd appreciate it.
Can we get some additional information on the total cost?
Sure.
We're gonna have two coaches, right? So two supplementals?
Hmm, well, one is robotics and one is for esports, so it's one coach each. It's not two, two...
So for each coach, it's just, I mean, esports is just one coach. So if we have forty kids, we've got one person?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Shall I answer that question? So there's two seasons. There's a competitive fall season and a competitive spring season with Ohio Esports. Um, and from my understanding, we would have coaches, two coaches that split each of the seasons, or maybe they would take different games within the same season. Because there need to be different teams depending on the games that are played by the teams. So you have either the two coaches work together in tandem in a single season, or we might have a coach do a fall season, a fall kind of season, and a spring, and the different teams.
We went out to Annhurst, and we looked at their lab, and we looked at the startup cost. And Jen did apply for a grant through the Vermillion Education Foundation that was accepted for the startup cost for the computers in the lab and the things that are needed, the chairs and things like that. No guarantees, but there is a donor possibly that is interested to become very involved with this, that, uh, that has a lot of interest in it, and we'd have to see whether that would pan out. But for now, it looks like the main cost to us would be the coach at this point. So I'll give you that information, and if you guys have any questions during the, between now and the next board meeting, I appreciate it if you let me know, and I'd like to put it up there on the next board meeting and see what your thoughts are as far as a recommendation. Okay, so going on to the next item would be to, for tonight, recommend a resolution to approve the robotics co-curricular supplemental position. And the position would be compensated at level eighteen of the co-curricular index and appendix, and also part of the Vermillion Teachers Association Agreement.
I'll move. I'll second. Oh, Marley?
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steff?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Habermil?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero. Thank you. Okay, the next item on my agenda is Dr. David Heil. I had the opportunity to read him and his wife this evening. We came in and I was able to give them a tour of the high school and of our elementary school. We didn't make it over to the middle school, and I look forward to being able to give him that tour when he comes back. But, uh, David is going to be up for a recommendation tonight for the hire for the new superintendent. And I'd like to read David's bio next, just to let you know a little bit about him. So, Dr. David Heil grew up in central Ohio. He completed his bachelor's science degree in comprehensive, comprehensive social studies education at the Ohio State University in nineteen ninety-three with an emphasis in history, geography, and political science. He completed a master's of science degree in political science at the University of Wyoming in nineteen ninety-four, and a master's of arts degree in educational administration at Ashland University in two thousand and three. He completed the superintendent's academy at Ohio University in two thousand and seven, and his doctorate of education and educational leadership at Miami, at Miami University Oxford in August of two thousand and eighteen. Dr. Heil began his teaching career at Newark High School in nineteen ninety-four, where he taught history, government, and geography for eight years, and coached varsity football and baseball before becoming the assistant principal at Licking Valley High School in two thousand and two. He became the high school principal at Licking Valley in two thousand and four and the superintendent in two thousand and seven. Dr. Heil co-founded the Children's Reading Foundation of Licking County in two thousand and nine, and he served as its executive director from two thousand and ten to two thousand and nineteen, promoting and facilitating parent reading to their young children every day. Dr. Heil is proud to be a Rotarian, the current board president of the United Way of Licking County, a member of Licking Memorial Hospital Board of Directors, and a member of the Board of Advisors of Kid Place of Licking County, rescuing and healing children from abuse and trauma. Angie Heil is Dr. Heil's wife and best friend of twenty-three years, and they have two adult sons who currently attend the Ohio University. I know, once again, it's, David, it was a pleasure touring you, and thanks for making the trip down here from Columbus. I know you've got a long drive back, and, uh, so I welcome you to the district. And we've got, as you can see, participants in the audience that came up and spoke tonight. It gave you a little bit of an idea of some of the things that we do here at the district. So you start to get a flavor of some of the things that go on here. There's a lot of wonderful things happening. We welcome you to the district tonight.
First of all, I want to thank the board for giving this wonderful opportunity, becoming Vermillion schools and to the community. We are going to move here and live here. In fact, we just, that was the real of the day, and we think we found a lot to buy. We're working on it, but we think we're going to be building a house, so very excited about coming here and being a part of your community. It's an awesome place. We live in a rural area. We have a gas station and one restaurant, and we don't have a nice historic area. We don't have the, uh, sort of the city atmosphere that you guys have here. And we certainly do not have that lake that you guys have here. So, um, so thank you for that wonderful opportunity. Mr. Pimble, thank you for the, he was so gracious to take us around the day. We've got more conversations to have, and I look forward to that. I do want to introduce my wife, Angie. She was supposed to come stand up here. Look like my life partner. But that's okay. She's being shy. Um, so we do hail from central Ohio, been there, born and raised, both of us. Newark is fifty miles directly east of Columbus, so that's where we grew up. But we also are not strangers to Lake Erie. We've been coming up here for twenty-five years. Angie's family bought a house up here twenty-five years ago. We had our honeymoon up here. It's over on, uh, over on the peninsula, over by East Harbor. And we actually were fortunate to be able to buy a house here, I don't know, ten or twelve years ago, over on the peninsula. And her sister and brother-in-law bought one. So we had a little compound over there on East Harbor, and we've got it up here on the lake. And so when we were looking for, you know, a change of pace and maybe moving from where we were, this is where we wanted to come, to the lake. So that's why we're here. And so that's a little bit about us, and you'll get, you'll get to know us a little bit more in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And on the video game. All that education that you read about, Mr. Pimble, I've been playing video games since the end of Atari.
Well, we're all very excited to have you come and join our community. Do you not feel like you have to stay for the rest of the meeting? I know you have a two and a half hour drive.
Yeah, we're gonna stay. Thank you.
You're already staying?
Okay, the next item in this board business.
Okay, I'd like to recommend a resolution for the board to approve a five-year contract to Dr. David Heil, superintendent, Vermillion Local School District, effective August first, two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll move. Second.
Hold the board, please.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Steff?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Habermil?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Welcome.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Okay, the next item is our discussion. Wait, am I getting to the discussion? I think we did a lot already today. Okay, we have our treasurer's report. Mr. Kingsherm?
Thank you. Number one, recommend a resolution for the board to approve the financial report for November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and add its attached name.
Second.
All right, first we'll take a look at the general fund revenue by month. Through the month of November, the district received ten point seven million in general fund revenue, compared to ten point seven at the same time last year, and eleven million in fiscal year twenty. Uh, right now, the district is on pace to collect its historical revenue average. Moving over to the food service fund revenue. Through the month of November, the district received three hundred and ten thousand dollars in food service revenue. Excuse me, compared to one hundred and seven thousand at this time last year, and one hundred and ninety-five thousand in fiscal year twenty. Uh, with all lunches and breakfasts fully reimbursed from the federal government this year, our revenue will outpace our historical average. Taking a look at all funds through the month of November, the district received eleven point five million in revenue, compared to eleven point seven at this time last year, and twelve point six in fiscal year twenty. Despite that slight dip, overall, the district is still on pace to collect its average amount of revenue from all funds as a disorder to pass. Moving on to the expenditure side. Through the month of November, the district has spent ten point seven billion from the general fund, compared to eleven point one at this time last year, and ten point eight in fiscal year twenty. And, you know, again, overall, the district is on pace to spend its historical average, assuming capital projects are completed next fiscal year. Looking at our food service expenditures through the month of November, the district has spent three hundred and thirty thousand from its food service fund, compared to two hundred and forty-one thousand at this time last year, and three hundred thousand in fiscal year twenty. Uh, the district's food service expenditures are higher than historical averages as the cost of food has increased, along with supply chain issues requiring the district to purchase maybe a little bit more non-perishable items than they typically have. Also, we will be purchasing ovens this year, and that is going to cause our expenses to outpace our historical averages. Again, though, we do have revenue to support that, so, uh, again, the fiscal year, I do anticipate us to have a positive food service balance as we have historically this month. Uh, moving on to all funds. Through the month of November, uh, we've spent eleven point six million, compared to eleven point seven last year, and twelve point five in fiscal year twenty. Total expenditures so far this year are slightly lower than historical averages, but those will creep up here by the end of fiscal year. but those will creep up here by the end of fiscal year to meet our historical average. And then lastly, we'll take a look at cash. Through the month of November, the district has $17.9 million in cash in the general fund, compared to $15.6 last year at this time, and $16.3 in fiscal year 20. Looking at our food service cash balance through the month of November, we currently have $157,000 in cash, compared to $40,000 at this time last year, and $273,000 in fiscal year 20. Again, with fully federal reimbursed lunches and breakfast this year, our ending food service cash should increase slightly each month until we have some of those larger capital project purchases of these ovens. The ovens are around $17,000 in fiscal year 20. And then looking at all cash, through the month of November, the district has $21.4 million in cash, compared to $19.3 at this time last year, and $19.6 in fiscal year 20. Moving on to the investment side, through the month of November, the district has earned a total of $52,061.16 on interest, compared to $77,798.16 last year. This is a difference of $15,737.68, or 20.2% less. Again, we are losing significant money on our interest side of things, and the outlook looks to be about the same. It does not look to be improving on the federal side of things in the next one and a half to two years. Some of these rates will still be around New York. Any questions?
I have curiosity.
Mm-hmm.
Which school is getting the new ovens? Are they...
No, I believe it's the middle school that I was talking about, yeah.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, we have a steamer there that we replace, the smart ovens that we replace. The insoles are over at the... I want to say we're close to the end of their lifecycle.
I'm good. Call the roll please.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Habermil?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Number two, recommend a resolution to approve the following donations. $19,558.19 from the Vermillion Education Foundation, $185 from Alliance Club, and $220 from an anonymous donation to the PHS Institute.
I'll move. One second. Call the roll please.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Habermil?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero. Thank you.
And as always, we're very appreciative of all of our donations that are generously given to the district. Okay, we're on to the consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items adopted by one school motion, unless a member of the boards, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. Number one, minutes of the November 10th, 2021 regular meeting, November 17th, 2021 special meeting, November 18th, 2021 special meeting, and December 2nd, 2021 special meeting. Number two, approve the amendment to the settlement agreement released in waiver between Vermillion Local School District and the Pillar Daniel Resco for tutoring services. Number three, approve the revisions to district policies and accompanying guidelines as recommended by NOLA for the first read as listed. Number four, approve the following employment actions. Resignations for Trisha Fenton, monitor, Lori Nick, food service, and van driver, Thomas Ed, Antog, facility manager, Mackenzie Henner, educational aide, and Melissa Jugware, monitor. Number five, one-year additional duties contract for the 21-22 contract school year to Emerson Slicer, Jonathan Custer, and Rachel Kidd. Number six, one-year supplemental contract for the 21-22 contract school year to Mary Lou Redman, Holy. Number seven, one-year classified limited contract for the 21-22 contract school year to Madison Ruben, Casey Warren, and Merrily Torres? To Mary Alice Torres. We may need to move. I keep pushing my paper thrower out and my life goes in a rut. It's a little fuzzy up here.
I'll move to the second. Second.
Call the roll please.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Habermil?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Next, we're on to our public participation. The Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance of public comments on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The Board offers public participation to members of the public and agrees with the college procedures as well. The Board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker, content of the speech, or viewpoints of the speakers. The public participation shall be permitted only as indicated on the Order of Business and the bylaws of this board. Anyone having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board may participate during the public participation of the meeting. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and will be requested to preface their comments by announcement of their name. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes, duration, and a one-time speaking. No participant may speak more than once. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address the question before members individually. Would anyone like to come up and speak tonight?
My name's Mike Thomas. My son Jacob Thomas was here for the esports, and as you know, Cedar Point is putting in a multimillion-dollar complex for esports. There's ways to raise money if this is approved. Along with other sports, like volleyball is livestreamed on YouTube, people are willing to pay money nowadays to watch video games. It's on major networks, channels, though people have become professionals in video games. I think it would be a lot of participation within the students, and, I mean, I would pay to come up and watch, depending, you know, where it's at, and I would be able to donate monitors, you know, to supplement costs. I know you're going to need the computers, the monitors, you're going to go through the Wi-Fi here. You know, I'm sure parents would be willing to supply like the HDMI cords and Ethernet cords for keep up with speeds, and, you know, you can project it onto the screens and stuff, you know, and I'm sure the kids would come and watch and support their school.
Thank you.
My name is Joseph Jones. I gave you guys a memo, an all-patent directed to the presiding officer, where I addressed my concerns over four or five laws that I felt were being broken, and I haven't heard a response from anybody on any of that, and I wanted to know if you guys felt that that was acceptable, me having the concerns that I had as a parent, my kids, and reading the law verbatim to you guys, and showing it to you, and showing how it's actually being broken, and no response at all. I don't think that is acceptable, and I would like to know what I'm supposed to do as a parent who feels my child has been harmed, and now my only recourse is litigation, and I just didn't ever think it would come all the way to this point to where I would have to physically, like, say where else, you know? We asked you guys about peach shade. We didn't get anything back about it. We asked you guys about extending the time for the meetings so that we have enough time. We didn't hear anything back. This is the reality for a lot of kids at Vermillion Schools. You guys can paint a very nice picture, but in the end, we still have problems, and you can't sweep them under the rug. Thank you for your time.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, there are dates and locations of upcoming board meetings. Board meetings will be held in the Workforce Development Room at Vermillion High School, 1250 Sanford Street, Vermillion. Organizational meeting Monday, January 10th, 2022, at 6:45, and a regular meeting Monday, January 10th, 2022, at 7:00. I would recommend a resolution to move into executive session for matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes. I'll move.
I'll second. Call the roll please.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Habermil?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero, and sign as ETM.